Good morning. Today is the twenty-sixth day of March. Time's nine o'clock. The board's in session to conduct its weekly open business meeting. Commissioner Daley and myself are present. Commissioner Davis in his absence. If you can introduce yourself for the record.
Bob Carney, operations.
John Blake, procurement.
Alice Allington, procurement.
Bob Graves, clerk's office.
Scott Covert, Parks and Lawways.
Laura Jorgensen, prosecutor's office.
Josh Brown, operations.
IT guy in the corner.
Heathro Boardy with the clerk's office.
Bob Perkins, Ada County procurement.
Brad Smith, assessor's office.
Beth Lawn, treasure.
Well, thank you. Appreciate everyone being here today. Ma'am Perk, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, there are not.
No changes to the agenda. Okay, we have some unfinished business to take up. I'll accept a motion to remove unfinished business from the table.
I move to remove the unfinished business from the table for consideration.
Second motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Final ranking and award recommendation for RFP two four oh twenty-six. Go ahead, Bob.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner. Before you this morning, under unfinished business is the final ranking and award recommendation of RFP two four zero two six. The design build of Ada County Juvenile Probation Photovoltaic Project. And the evaluation team has completed evaluations and the interviews and was prepared to make an award recommendation today, but we received a protest from EGT Solar in response to our award recommendation. So therefore, we'd like to re-table the award recommendation to April second, two thousand twenty-four Open Business Meeting for further consideration. In the meantime, we will meet with you soon to discuss the protest and whether that protest has merit or not.
Okay. All right. Any questions?
No.
Thank you.
All right.
This description is pretty accurate.
All right. You got the dates?
Yes.
Okay, I'll accept the motion.
I move to table the final rankings and award recommendations of RFP two four zero two six. Design build for Ada County Juvenile Probation Photovoltaic Project to April second, two thousand twenty-four.
Thank you. I'll second the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving into new business, we have a couple of resolutions. I'll open the public hearing on resolution number twenty-nine sixty-seven. Adjusting the Ada County budget for FY twenty twenty-four to reflect the use of fund balance to the ad valorem budget. Any questions? Who wants to give us a good explanation? Is there a clerk's office? Oh, there we go.
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead.
All right. Thanks for trying, Ian. So, morning, Mr. Chairman.
Morning.
Commissioners. Let's give a little explanation. Last year, our office was responsible for creating the HTR role on short notice per House Bill two ninety-two. HTR stands for homeowner's tax relief. This role accounted for all.
That's a good issue.
Yeah, right. This role accounted for all parcels that were qualified for the homestead exemption by the supplement in July, and that was approximately one hundred and thirty-five thousand parcels. Unfortunately, we inadvertently left off two hundred and fifty parcels, which left a credit shortage. To make all parties whole, we're here today to ask the board for a one-time fund balance transfer of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars from our ad valorem account.
Yep. Okay. Hundred and fifty thousand. Okay, from the fund balance to the ad valorem. And that's to give some tax relief to the people that didn't get it from the state.
Correct. And that will be credit, credits on their second half of tax bill, so.
Okay.
And they are all being notified then?
We'll be, we're in the process of creating a letter that will be notifying all property owners, the two hundred and fifty, letting them know. And it'll be good news for them because they're unaware, so this will be an additional discount or credit on their second half of tax bill, so.
Okay. All right. Any other questions?
No questions, just comment, but I guess to thank, thank the staff. And if this was the only hiccup we had, I think this was a momentous effort for all of you for two ninety-two was less than clear in how it was being moved. So thank you for your work and.
Hasn't there been some, some improvements to two ninety-two and, and this year's legislative session?
Yeah, so currently, I think House Bill five twenty-one, I mean, I think all it needs is a governor's signature. And I mean, basically, they're calling that a cleanup bill for two ninety-two. So we're hopeful, hopefully, we'll find a solution in there. But these, these credits are problematic. They work great for the property owner, but if there's any error within, I mean, they're very difficult to administer, so we're hope, hopeful that there'll be a permanent solution that we can find within there.
Okay.
And out of, and out of a hundred and thirty-five over two hundred and fifty, that's pretty good, actually.
A hundred and thirty-five thousand.
About a hundred and thirty-five thousand.
Correct. So we'll do better next year, though, this year.
Always, always.
Okay, well, I'll close the public hearing on resolution number two nine six seven. I'd call for a motion.
I move to approve resolution two nine six seven as listed on the agenda.
Second motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, resolution number, I'll open the public hearing on resolution two nine six eight, ARPA resolution sixty-eight, for use of allowable expenditures related to the American Rescue Plan Fund Budget. Okay? Do we have, oh, yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner. This is for, so we have two items. One is the final RTU replacement. There's twenty-three units at various locations of the county. And then the second is the use of revenue replacement for the elections remodeled project.
Okay.
So that is what is before you.
Okay. Well, it's good. We, we're gonna get all those RTUs done.
Yes.
And I think on the, on the revenue replacement situation, we'll be, we'll be hopefully looking at a tighter budget than what we've been talking about, so we make sure that we get, well, get it, get it done well. Any other questions or?
No, just comments of what you just said. We hope that it comes in under this and probably will, but it's, it's going to beef up our election process so that if there's more transparency or clarity, so that we can be sure that our.
Don't forget election integrity.
Integrity.
Yeah.
So that we have our, our, our electorate in Ada County can feel comfortable with our election process.
Well, I hope so. All right, any more discussion on resolution two nine six eight? Here and now, I'll close the public hearing on resolution two nine six eight.
I move to approve resolution two nine six eight, six eight as listed on the agenda.
Okay, I'll second the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I'll open the public hearing on resolution two nine six nine, resolution sole source procurement insecticide products from Vessaris. That's a hard, that's a hard one. Oh, Adam, tell us about this.
Adam's up there, ready to talk.
Tell us about Vessaris, Adam.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Daley. Yes, so many of our insecticide represent, or actually manufacturers, have aligned with distributors as sole sourced vendors for their products, and this is one of those situations. We have three of those vendors that we are sole sourcing items through. One of the series of products will actually go out for the formal bid, and Bob and I are working on that currently. So, yeah, this is a, this is an insecticide manufacturer kind of situation where we're just adapting to that and trying to simplify our buying process.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? Now, I'll close the public hearing on resolution two nine six nine. Call for a motion.
I move to approve resolution two nine six nine as listed on the agenda.
Second a motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes. All right, moving on, we have some bid openings.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner. Before you this morning, we do have three openings. The first of which is bid two four zero three one, the ARPA Ada County Landfill Groundwater Treatment two thousand twenty-four. And Alyssa's got our Bonfire E procurement system all queued up up there if you're ready for us to proceed with the opening.
We're ready.
All right.
Proceed.
So this is a, a project for five new groundwater extraction wells with a self-contained water treatment system. And today, we'll be looking at the name of the bidder, and there'll be a pricing, this will have a spreadsheet, Alyssa?
Yeah.
So this will have a spreadsheet up there with the base bid amount. There's a three, or excuse me, two hundred thousand dollar owner's contingency and an Idaho Power thirty thousand dollar contingency added into this project.
Okay.
Okay. So our first bidder up there is Knife River Corporation, and they have a total bid amount of one million, eight hundred ninety-one thousand dollars. Bidder number two is Olympus Technical Services Incorporated with a total bid amount of one million, four hundred sixteen thousand, three hundred forty-four dollars. And bidder number three is RSCI with a total bid amount of two million, two hundred nine thousand, one hundred seven dollars. So those are our three bidders for this project, and we will need some time to review the bids, and we would like to request that this be tabled for award to the April second, two thousand twenty-four Open Business Meeting.
Oh, big bread.
Yeah, well, quite a difference.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, well, I'll accept the motion then. April second, you say?
Yes, please.
Okay.
I move to table the award of bid two four zero three one, ARPA Ada County Landfill Grandwater Treatment, two thousand twenty-four to April second, two thousand twenty-four.
Second motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay. Thank you.
Our second project, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner, is the opening of bid two four zero three six, the Stage One ARPA Ada County Expo Idaho Park Construction. And we received eight responses for this project. And Alyssa's got Bonfire already up there if you're ready for us to open.
Yes.
All right. So, Mr. Chairman, today, we're looking for the name of the bidder only. This is a category B solicitation with two stages. Stage one is the qualification of the bidders, and bidders that score seventy percent or higher will be recommended to move on to stage two. And stage two is the bid process that will take place sometime in September. This is gonna be the Expo Idaho Park. It's a forty-seven acre park at Expo Idaho that is funded by the American Rescue Plan Act of two thousand twenty-one. And those are our eight proposers up there. So the first one is CM Company Incorporated. The second one is ESI. Bidder number three is IMCO General Construction. Bidder number four is Knife River Corporation Mountain West. Bidder number five is RSCI. Bidder number six is Stroth General. Bidder number seven, TDX Power Services. And bidder number eight is Wright Brothers Building Company. So we will need a little time to evaluate the qualification submittals, and we would like to request this be tabled for review of the submittals and approval of the pre-qualification list to the April ninth, two thousand twenty-four Open Business Meeting.
Okay. Okay, any questions?
No.
All right, I'll accept the motion.
I move to table the award of bid two four zero three six, Stage One ARPA Ada County Expo Idaho Park Construction to April twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-four.
Oh, excuse me, April ninth.
April ninth?
Yes.
Okay. April ninth, two thousand twenty-four.
Okay, I'll second motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on.
The last item we have for opening for you this morning is the opening of RFP two four zero three seven, the Expo Idaho Venue Management Software. Evan's got us queued up up there if you're ready for us to open.
We're ready.
All right. So we received four proposals for this project. And this is a project for a singular booking and event software that will provide for cost-efficient solution for Expo Idaho interim events and management of the Western Idaho Fair. So today, we're looking just for the name of the proposers, and we have four proposers up there. And the first one is Data Netflix, Data Netflix Solutions. And Alterin U.S. Incorporated. Bidder, or proposal number three is Momentous Technologies. And proposal number four is V Fairs LLC. Those are our four proposers, and we would like to request this be tabled for final ranking and award recommendation to the April sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four Open Business Meeting.
Okay, I'll accept the motion.
I move to table the final rankings and award recommendation for RFP two four zero three seven, Expo Idaho Venue Management Software to April sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four.
I'll second the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, next up, we have licensing, catering permits, and license renewals. Any question or discussion on any of the catering permits, license renewals? I'll accept the motion.
I move to approve the licenses as listed on the agenda, including two catering permits, two license transfers, and twenty-three license renewals, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Okay, I'll second the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Well, we have the clerk's office with us.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioner. Couple of quick updates. We're only fifty-five days out from the upcoming election.
Fifty-five.
Coming soon, but what's important is this Friday, it's candidate withdrawal deadlines. We'll see if that changes the landscape of any of the races. It's always unpredictable, but we've got some eyes on it. We are excited to say that we've been working really hard on recruitment of staff for Election Day and Election Night. Our goal is to eliminate express temp services. They have an up charge, so we're trying to drive costs down on the election. So we're nearly fully staffed as of now. Quick finance update, we will meet with you all in Ida Bailey at eleven-thirty today. They're gonna review the annual comprehensive financial report. And then I think a lot of folks probably noticed, a lot of people in the courthouse this morning, we have started a pretty large-scale trial. So we've been working with TCA's office, Sheriff's Department, and all of our strategies are in line. We're ready to execute the trial. I get called to jury duty at twelve-thirty today, so I may or may not see you for about six weeks, but I will keep you posted.
Well, good luck.
Thank you, sir.
Been through, through this drill recently, and it's, it worked very well, so I'm sure this was going well as well.
Good to hear, Commissioner.
Yeah. All right, well, good enough. Anything else?
Chairman, no, sir.
Okay, well, thank you. We have next up our Claims Journal for March twenty-second. I'll accept a motion.
I move to authorize payment of the claims on the Claims Journal dated March twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four.
Okay, I'll second the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next up, we have personnel actions.
I move to approve the personnel actions as listed on the agenda and that the summary sheet remain on file in the Commissioner's office.
I'll second the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Well, Brian, you're here.
Seems like I'm just up there.
Yeah, you're just there. Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, no tax cancellations today, but as you recall, last year, House Bill fifty-one passed, and I believe I had a trailer bill that kicked it in for this year instead of last year. So basically, what I got a printout of is what we've designed so far. So the highlighted yellow is just for your explanation of what's new on the assessment notice. The House Bill fifty-one required this information right here, which is gonna be your percentage changes.
Year over year.
Yeah, year over year. We have added some additional information at this point, which is all exemptions that are qualified for in the upper right-hand box, and then the year-over-year overall district budgeted amount. So it will be very transparent on the assessment notice as far as how the dollars are shifting around. And right now, you can see, based on the parcel percentage change, there's a lot of negatives there. And that's, and then if you look at the overall budget, and that's why it's good to look at both of them, you can see the overall budget, so most of those districts went up, you know, two to five percent or six percent, but the actual taxes on this parcel actually went down. And what that's illustrating is the tax burden shift coming off of residential. As you remember, last year was the first year that taxes started shifting away from residential. They've been on a trend for a long time, piling on to residential, and this was the first shift. So that's what this is recognizing, but, but take a look at it. Let me know if you have any comments in regards to it. And we're working on it in-house right now and working with programmers to get it ready, so it'll be.
So this is what the assessment notice will look like?
Correct, minus the yellow part. So this is just a mocked-up one, but this is kind of where we're heading, what we're heading for, so be much more transparent for the property owner.
Okay.
So the law just required the percentage of property tax budget change, not any other details?
These three boxes here. So this is gonna be based just on the parcel individually.
Right, individual parcel.
Yeah. We, we did go the extra step, and this one here is the overall budget for the district as a, basically, year over year. And you can see, I mean, there's a big difference based on a individual parcel versus our overall budget, so that's gonna come into play with the, you know, whether they take the three percent or not, so that will, you'll see the impact there, so.
Okay. Okay.
I just wanna give you an update on that since it does go into effect when we send out assessment notices, so we're, we're trying to get that all taken care of, so.
Okay. All right. Okay.
So this, this far right one here is something we added, it wasn't required.
That's correct, so. And that's, that's the overall.
Right, the overall reduction.
All right, well, thank you. I don't have any questions. Do you have any questions?
Nope.
All right. Is there someplace on there we could put the state budget? How, what's, what's happening with the state budget?
J-PAC or whatever it is. It's on the backside.
Oh, okay.
You're welcome to take a closer look and let me know if you have any comments.
All right, all right. All right, anything else?
That's it for the assessor's office.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, well, next up, we have our distinguished treasurer.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Daley. Just a brief follow-up on the conversation you had with the assessor's office regarding the property tax relief that we've been administering. As you noted, House Bill two ninety-two was very challenging to implement. The concepts, the calculations were complex, the timeframes were tight. So I think it's understandable that we're finding now improvements that we can incorporate into property tax that will be, relief that we'll be administering in upcoming years. As you also noted, House Bill two nine, sorry, five twenty-one, I understand, is off to the governor's office, so that should provide some necessary cleanup to help but make it easier for us to administer this coming, October, November. And on that note, our priority right now is preparing for the second half property tax notices. We'll send those in early May, so we'll be spending the next month making sure that all the credits are, again, appropriately calculated for the second half. For those taxes that will be due in the second half is due June twentieth. So that's, that's our priority right now.
Okay.
And that's about it. And that's about it.
Alright. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, we've got a couple of grants here to, uh, consider. Uh, grant number twenty-four zero three A. Uh, who's gonna tell us about that grant? Is anybody here? Who's? I don't understand, grant application two, I guess, Church East Christ Latter Day Saints, for vouchers to be used for those re-entering the community after incarceration, no county match, okay? Four one twenty-four to three thirty-one twenty-five. Nobody's here wanna talk about it? Apparently not. Okay. Is there a motion?
Uh, both of these grant applications, just as a comment, uh, Mr. Chairman, the, these are places where it actually affects our budget positively, because these are grants, and, uh, so I just, I, I would move to approve grant number two four zero three A, authorize the online completion and submission of the grant by Stephanie Bastrop of the Sheriff's Office, and authorize the chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
Thank you, I'll second the motion, all in favor, say aye, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we have grant application twenty-four oh four, grant application to the Central District Health for approval of the opioid, opioid payment strategies. Five thousand dollars, no, no county, uh, match. Any questions? No? Good, I'll accept my, uh, a motion.
I move to approve grant number two four oh four A, authorize the online completion and submission of the grant by Maureen Baker Burton of the Trial Court Administration Office, and authorize the chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
Okay, I'll second the motion, all in favor, say aye, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. We now have the approval of the minutes for the, uh, March thirteenth Open Public, Open Business Meeting.
I move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Okay, I'll second the motion, all in favor, say aye, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Alright, next up, we have, uh, Expo Idaho, we have a couple of, uh, interim events, uh, Dennis Dillon Car Sale and Gem State Gaming Convention. Uh, any questions or issues on these two events? Not, I'll accept the motion.
I move to approve the two interim, uh, event agreements as listed on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Okay, thank you, I'll second the motion, all in favor, say aye, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, now we have Parks and Waterways. Then we have, uh, four events at the Barber Park and Education Event Center. Okay. Any questions or discussions on these? They're all in twenty-four, so.
All this year?
Yeah. Alright, I'll accept the motion.
Uh, just another comment, this, this, this is one way that the, we actually help the budget, by having, uh, individuals who use that facility pay for it, so I move to approve the four Barber Park, Education and Event Center agreements as listed on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Okay, I'll second the motion, all in favor, say aye, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, now we have, uh, eleven agreements, any questions or issues about any of these agreements? Did we get the issue resolved with agreement E?
Um, Mr. Chairman, there are two agreements on here related to Barber Dam.
Mm-hmm.
And the lease agreement, and the two go hand in hand, that would be C and J. And according to the statute, for a lease agreement, you need unanimous agreement of the board, since Commissioner Davidson is not here, um, you probably need to table those two agreements.
House Commissioners, here. Agreement C and J?
Yes.
Okay, well, I'll accept the motion to table those two agreements till, uh, next week, that'd be April second.
Mr. Chairman, I move to appro, to, uh, table agreement C, uh, or, great, listed C, it's agreement number fifteen six thirty-three, and J listed on the agenda as agreement number one three eight five seven dash one dash two four, until what day next week?
Second.
April second, twenty twenty-four.
Okay, I'll second the motion, all in favor, say aye, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, those two have been, uh, been, uh, tabled, uh, so we can take up the rest agreements, is there any question or issues about the other agreements? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move to, uh, prove, let's see, there's two missing, so it's nine, the nine agreements as listed on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
Okay, I'll second the motion, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, next up, we have the indigent services item, uh, weekly indigent items, is there any questions or issues on the weekly indigent items?
I move to accept the recommendations of the indigent services staff as listed on the summary of cases dated March twenty-six, twenty twenty-four, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Okay, I'll second the motion, all in favor, say aye, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there any other business need to be brought before the board this time? Hearing none, we're adjourned. Well, good morning, today is the twenty-sixth day of March, uh, the Board of County Commissioners, uh, uh, standing as the Board of County Emergency Medical Services District, uh, is ready to conduct its Open Business Meeting, the, uh, the time is nine, uh, thirty-two. Commissioner Daley and myself are in attendance, Commissioner Davidson is absent. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we change the, uh, main agenda and remove, uh, the nine-thirty legal staff meeting from the agenda.
Okay. I'll second the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We've deleted our legal staff meeting. Okay, um, man, clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, there are not.
Okay. First up is our Claims Journal dated March twenty-second, I'll accept the motion on the Claims Journal.
I move to authorize payment of the claims as listed on the Claims Journal dated March twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, regarding EMS expenditures.
Okay. I'll second the motion, all in favor, say aye, aye? Well, next up, we have, uh, personnel actions.
I move, I move to approve personnel actions as listed on the agenda, that the summary sheet remain on file in the Commissioner's office.
Okay, I'll second the motion, all in favor, say aye, aye?
Aye.
Now we have approval of the minutes.
I move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second the motion, all in favor, say aye, aye?
Aye.
Now we have an EMS update.
Morning.
Morning.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner. Uh, I believe the, the only update that I have, you may already know about, I'm sure the, the, uh, Senate Bill fourteen sixteen was heard in committee and passed unanimously, uh, to the, the main Senate body last week, where, uh, it was discussed pretty robustly, uh, and then, uh, to a twenty-six nine vote, which was encouraging. And then, most discouraging to the House side, to the State Affairs Committee, I believe, where it is, uh, it remains without a home on an agenda. Um, so it, uh, it appears stalled, and when I say stalled, I mean stopped, and I think that means potentially dead for the year.
That's the Essential Services Bill?
Yes, sir. Um, I, I'm not sure what, I'm not sure that anybody knows yet, I certainly don't know what the next steps are for this. It certainly would be, it, it seems like a regroup and, uh, and a restart at some point.
Well.
That's all I have for you.
That's what it takes sometimes, yes. Okay. So you don't have anything else on you?
That's it.
Wow, Sean's on vacation.
Uh, yeah, uh, yeah, well-needed.
Yep. Well, we all need a little of that. Alright, well, thank you.
Yep, you bet.
Alright, we'll be adjourned. Okay.